To your city commission meeting, please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. We'll call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Family Literacy Day. Janelle DeFries, will you come forward? Whereas, excuse me, whereas National Family Literacy Day, established by the 103rd Congress in 1994 and now marking its 27th anniversary on November 1, 2021, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family and emphasizes the impact that parents have on their child's learning. And whereas this day is celebrated across America each year and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers. And whereas literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding read-a-thons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. And whereas, as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence and strive toward goals that otherwise would not be achievable. Whereas the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, nonpolitical, volunteer, women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children and adults. And whereas education being one of the cornerstone of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter is committed in increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. Now therefore, I, Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim November 1, 2021 as National Family Literacy Day. Would you like to say a few words? I believe the proclamation says it all, but thank you to the mayor and the city council for your endorsement and support of National Family Literacy Day. I believe that will help bring to light the issues of low literacy and illiteracy and hopefully affect some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Are there any changes or issues with the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from the October 12, 2021, regular meeting as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Pass five to zero. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, Charter Ordinance 61 exemption out of KSA 124203 related to uniform complaints and notice to appear filed in municipal court.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, there have been no changes or additions since the previous discussion. Very briefly, a reminder, this simply changes the mechanism that allows our animal control officers to take immediate enforcement action, has no bearing on innocent or guilt, it's simply a change to match our procedures.
Understood, okay. Any other, any questions from the commission? This requires a roll call vote. Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Five to zero. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, new business items not on the agenda, public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address, and the sign-up sheet has been provided here. Yes, sir, are you Mr. Boldridge?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay.
I am here, I'm not a citizen of Leavenworth, Kansas, but I spent a lot of time in Leavenworth. My son played on traveling baseball team here that was coached by Chuck Rambo.
Could you state your address, please?
4457 Sherman Road, Atchison, Kansas.
Okay.
And I am one of probably a many of individuals that believe Chuck needs to be recognized for who he was in life. He wasn't just a husband, a father, he was an American hero, a true American hero. And I'm, Leavenworth, Kansas was his last destination, this is where he chose to make his home at.
His kids are going to public schools here, they're playing sports here.
He was also a pioneers baseball coach, he took 14 little boys that he handpicked and made superstars out of them. And I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to read any of the information on Chuck, but I mean, this is his list of awards through military, he was one of the most highly decorated war heroes in the world. And I don't know, I just think he needs a road sign or something coming in or out of Leavenworth that says who he is, and then people can look him up and see who he is. I've spoke with Todd Thompson here, I've spoke with Jerry Kuckelman, I've spoke with Senator Fitzgerald, I've spoken to a lot of people, I've spoken to Jermaine, and I'm just trying to get the guy recognized for being a true American hero. I mean, he, we're all here with freedom because of this guy's career, I mean, there's other soldiers there, but this guy was truly in charge of a whole lot in the United States military.
Wow. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Gould, 1054 10th Avenue. I have been struggling with issues with code enforcement in the department, including a code enforcement official that had struck me and left a bruise in a department head that has been unable to return my phone call for several years regarding this matter. Along these lines, things have happened that I have, I served on a facilities committee for a nonprofit locally. Recently, I've contacted three city commissioners to ask about a certain issue. The mayor called and three weeks later, they got back with me, but they sent the, instead of sending the email to me, they send it to the local administrator of that nonprofit, not giving me a copy. I will also say Commissioner Griswold was involved a couple, a week or so later, so that'd have been two weeks after him, and a week after that, I had contact with Commissioner Prisinger, who quickly got me the same answer that I got from the department within 24 hours. However, this department is not user-friendly, and I'd like something to be dealt with with the individual that's currently terrorizing me, because an individual that has nobody to answer to after they strike a citizen, I find unacceptable.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Larkin.
Yeah, my name is Randy Larkin, I live at 411 North 20th, most of you know me as the GM from Home and Place Restaurant downtown. You know, I just really came down here because I felt compelled, you guys take a lot of heat from people all over, but man, the job you guys have done with the streets and the roads, and then manicuring around the pothole or the mantel covers, anyways, I haven't seen it like this ever, so I really just came here to say thank you and great job, so keep it up.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, that's great. Okay, next item on the agenda, new business, general item, sorry, review fire damage structure at 1006 Kickapoo.
This will be Halberdett, our chief building inspector.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Evening.
As the policy report states, the, there has been some work done on 1006 Kickapoo, three sides are painted, the backside is not completed yet, the, as my policy report states, the property owners have now informed me that they, they took off a 10 by 10 section, and they want to add a 14 by 24 in its place. I've told them that they need to come update their permits and go through the proper processes because we'll still have to review that. But the rest of the exterior, I would say the roof has not been repaired from the fire. And then as far as the inside, they tell me they really haven't done much yet. So staff is recommending that we hold on to the funds for at least another 90 days. Oh, are you, are you Schaefer?
Hi, my name's Schaefer Huffigan, I'm one of the homeowners of 1006 Kickapoo. As of Friday and Saturday, the roof has been repaired, we were out there, we repaired it. Currently, we are still debating whether or not we're going to do an addition on the back due to just we need to get it done. The third, the fourth side is not painted on the back, that is correct, but the roof has been done. And we are aware of the additional permits that would need to be required if we chose to do an addition. We are about to finish up the back and start on the inside, fire damage, most of the fire damage was contained to that 10 by 10 room that he mentioned that we tore off the back and has been completely removed. We also removed the concrete pad that, that was on, so we have done a significant amount of work on the house, there was a lot more weather damage, not fire-related, that needed to be done prior to us being able to finish all the siding to make it up to code, so.
Okay. Does it look like you're going to be finished in another 90 days?
Yeah, the fire damage part will definitely be done in the next 90 days.
Okay.
I was out there today, ma'am, and saw the back and there's a, oh, probably about two by three hole above the back door, looks like it's still charred from the fire, I don't know if that's part of the fire damaged area.
Yes, sir, that's part of the fire damage.
You know, I'm guessing environments might be getting in through that hole, I don't know if they are.
Uh, no, sir, we haven't had them, I think we've had a presence enough there every day that we've kind of kept them out.
Okay, and you, I saw you had dug a ditch.
We, we had started to, but I think we're going to probably nix that plan.
What was that for? Is that for the foundation?
We were discussing doing a foundation with the addition that Hal spoke of.
Okay.
But it's not deep enough to pour, I think we're going to hold off on doing that until we at least get that backside done. Like I said, we finished the roof, that was kind of our priority because I knew that you folks would want to be seeing that.
And you know that Mr. Burdett is the person you need to be working closely with on this project.
Yes, sir, I'm aware.
Okay.
We've had good discussions.
Good.
I haven't spoken with her, but I've spoken with Sean.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Sean's on shift right now, so he was unable to make it, so, sorry, you're stuck with me.
All right, any other questions?
No.
And it's your recommendation or staff recommendation of 90, another 90 days for repairs to be made? All right, there's no?
No, no other comments.
No other comments, then entertain a motion.
I move that the city commission allow up to another 90 days for repairs to be made to 1006 Kickapoo Street.
A second. It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting. Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Thank you, have a good evening. Thank you. You too. Next item on the agenda, consider bids for fire station number one boiler replacement.
Chief Mike Shore here tonight for this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Hello.
Fire Department's here tonight requesting the commission authorize purchase of two new boilers for fire station number one located at 3600 South 20th Street. These boilers would be replacing our existing boilers we have now that are, they're 21 years old, were installed when the station was built back in 2000, and they are currently, they're at the end of their effective lifespan, and just creating a lot of repair costs on there. And they have been for a lot of years now, but we started probably about three years ago looking at the idea of getting them replaced and trying to get it added on to the CIP. We, recently, I went back about three years and looked at repair costs for the boilers, and just the maintenance and repair for the boiler systems alone over the last three years has been in excess of $35,000 to keep them operating, so.
Wow.
Yeah, they're very, they're very expensive, require a lot of maintenance every year. So we, we had contacted an engineering firm knowing that, that we were coming up on the CIP, we had contacted engineering firm to come in and do an analysis of what we have and see what their thoughts were. And we'd used this engineering firm before, if you guys remember, probably about three years ago or so on, our control system replacement, and we had really good luck with them, they do a great job, so. They're, after looking it over and stuff, they concluded the same that, you know, it is definitely a need to repair or replacement. And so we got back with them a short time later and asked them to, contracted with them to design our replacement system as, as well as, you know, draw up the scope of work and put together a bid package that we can send out, send out to contractors in the area through, through the paper and through local media outlets and stuff to, to get some bids in here for. So we, we had opened the, got, got our bids and we had opened them up on, let's see here, was it, bid opening was October 18th at 2:00 PM, and we had got, we had four people put in, but only got three of them that we could actually take the bids on, and a low bidder in this, in this process was Rand Construction Company out of Kansas City, Missouri, for, with a bid of $54,700.
Okay.
So with the, like I say, the city's 2021 capital improvement, it had included some, some funding for this project, so our staff is recommending that we go with the Rand Construction Company.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Shore?
Chief, I'll preface my comments by saying I am by no means HVAC expert, in fact, my knowledge of it is very small. But to me, a boiler just sounds so old school, is there, I mean, should we be looking at a heat pump or some type of furnace? Boiler just doesn't sound, it sounds antiquated.
Sure, and, and, and I agree with you, that is, just that terminology's been around for a long time, but they, the new boilers, they're nothing like the old ones you see in the basement of buildings.
So you're not stoking it with coal or anything?
No.
That's way back, yeah.
They're, they're very high efficient, condensing boilers that we're looking to get, they're, the ones that we have now weren't that they were all that inefficient, it's just the design of them required a lot of, a lot of maintenance, it had like a spark plug igniter and it would just on and off vibrating sounds and stuff, and these, the newer ones are much, the longevity on them are better, require less maintenance every year, and we, so we have two of them, and being that that station's occupied 24 hours a day, they're set up to alternate, alternate between one another, one, every, like, right now it's every Monday morning, like 10 o'clock, it'll switch to, from one boiler, and then the next week to the next, and then that helps prolong the life of the boiler as well as, and it gives you some redundancy when the, when the system's broken down or something, as well as if there's a really cold winter, they can both fire at the same time if, if it requires that kind of demand out of the, out of the water, so.
Thank you for that.
They do, people are put, people, a lot of people you'll hear any more popular thing in construction, even in residential is in-floor heat that they'll put in and stuff, as you, as you do while building a house, they're, but people will put, they're, they're put in smaller, and it's actually a boiler that they put in for those.
Okay, okay, well, thanks for that.
And this boiler is currently 21 years old.
Yes.
That's pretty old. That's the original, right?
Yes, that was original to the station, correct.
And the thing is, they run day and night, because you're, I mean, you're there 24/7, so it's different than, say, whoever in business or something.
And both of those boilers, they're, they're side by side on one side of the station, but it, it pumps water from one end, as you, you know, looking at the station, there's, we got the, we got the suppression side and then the admin side, and it puts out the heat for both sides.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, the bids are for both equipment and labor.
Yes, sir.
This question is probably from Mr. Kramer. The, the bids are pretty close, Rand Construction Company, out of town, Kansas City, Missouri, $54,700. Mr. Breeze Heating and Cooling, local Leavenworth, Kansas firm, $56,357.56. And I know we go, we're obligated to always go with the low bid even if it's, if the local contractor or local firm is like just one or two percent above the, above the low, the low bid.
Right, we have a 1% local option on these, and it doesn't fit within that, so of course our preference is the local, and we're good to see a local bid, and very competitive, just not on this.
Yeah, this one, I did the calculations, it's about 3% close, but, yeah, I thought, and we hadn't really talked about that for a while, so we do have that flexibility at about the 1%.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion. Well, this is, no, yeah, this is motion, sorry, entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve purchase and installation of boiler for fire station number one awarded to Rand, Rand Construction Company, the amount of $54,700.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. First consider, consideration ordinance rezoning 520 North 7th from Office Business District to Neighborhood Business District.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. As you said, this is a request to rezone the property at 520 North 7th from Office Business District to Neighborhood Business District. The property is currently occupied by a one-story commercial building, there's a barber shop in part of it, the other portion of it is vacant, and this is just north of the June's Northland Building, which is also zoned Neighborhood Business District, right next door to it. So the rezoning is being requested to allow for a broader mix of retail service establishments that would be appropriate for neighborhood setting. This particular owner does intend to keep the barber shop that's in there now that's operated by another individual, and then the owner of the building would be looking to open a tattoo and piercing studio in the vacant portion, which is an allowed use in the Neighborhood Business District. So again, it is directly adjacent to the June's Northland Building, which as I said is also zoned Neighborhood Business District. It does sit right along 7th Street, and there's a pretty wide mix of commercial and office and residential uses all along that corridor. So after we sent out the required public notices within 200 feet, we did not have any feedback from anyone who was notified. The planning commission did have a public hearing for this item on October 4th and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the request, and no residents spoke in opposition. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
Yeah, I do. What is the difference between Office Business District and Neighborhood Business District?
Office Business really restricts it more to just office-type uses, Neighborhood Business allows for more retail and service-oriented uses.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know why I never knew that before, but I do. Any other questions on this? No. Everybody's quiet tonight. Okay, no, I don't have any other questions. This requires a consensus to move forward.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Thank you.
I'm all for growing, thank you, I'm all for growing businesses. That's right. Okay, the next item on the agenda is first consideration ordinance to amend Section 252, changing the city commission meeting time.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, if you'll recall, at the October 19 study session, we talked briefly about the idea of moving the city commission meetings from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Some of the reasons given were, the other city boards and planning commission, board zoning appeals are at 6 o'clock, USD 453 starts there at 6:00, Leavenworth Water Department actually starts it at 5:00. 6 o'clock still gives plenty of time for citizens to participate in those meetings. So we mentioned that there's a consensus to move it forward, we mentioned that you'd see it again. Right now, we would plan to start it in January, talking, I think the most important thing is that everybody's aware of the change, and that it doesn't, you know, happen at the end of the year, so the idea is we would hear it on two readings, but make it effective not until January, the start of the year, that'll give us a chance to put it in the newsletter, put it on Facebook and all that kind of stuff. We do start January with the study session, so that would give even more opportunity to get that information out, so that's what's before you tonight on first consideration.
Okay. Commissioners, what are your thoughts? I think we talked about this before, a little bit. Yeah, yes.
That's forward.
Okay.
That's forward.
Any, any other questions on this? I, I like the idea of waiting till January, too. Get it out there. All right, well, this is, this requires a consensus, first consideration, so.
Yep.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, we're five and zero. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Man, it's 7:25, we are on the road.
If you're quick, we'll set a record.
I know.
We're talking.
I move to approve the claims for October the 9th, 2021, through October 22nd, 2021, in the amount of $1,448,063, I mean, $63,91, net amount for payroll, number 21 effective October 22nd, 2021, in the amount of $348,352.51, includes police and fire pension in the amount of $8,804.19.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please begin voting. Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Aye, record.
That concludes our agenda, we'll go around the horn here.
Yeah, just a couple things, thank you. I think we've all seen the numbers from the trunk or treat this past Saturday night, we had 896 counted, we think we're probably a little over 900, probably missed one or two here or there. So thank you first of all to the community for coming out, it was a very positive event, thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department, Police Department, all city departments who participated in that, I think it was a great event. You know, this started out of the pandemic and the need to do something outside and well-spaced, and I think we sort of found a winner on this program, so, you know, maybe continue to add to it and make that an annual event out there. A plug for city basketball signups, I talked to the Parks and Rec Director, we set a record in 2019, we had the most we'd ever had, and I don't know if it's because basketball's an indoor event, but we're really struggling this year. We are formalizing that program back with Lansing, which we didn't, you know, we didn't do anything last year, but coming back out of the pandemic, trying to get back with Lansing, we really had some momentum in 2019, but we're really struggling this year. So we're going to put the signs, the signs are already back out at the elementary schools, we did the yard signs, that really helped in 2019, we'll put it out on social media. But we're doing our best trying to get those numbers back up as parents feel more comfortable for their kids to play those indoor, close-area sports, they're youngsters, so, seeing, seeing a little lower numbers, but hopeful that they'll rise up. So that is all I have.
Great, great.
I just encourage everyone to vote, you can vote this week at the county courthouse, 4th and Almond, from 8:00 to 5:00, you show up with a picture ID and be in and out in about a couple minutes. Talked to a citizen today who voted at around noon, they were number 921, I'm guessing it might be close to 1,000 now, which seems like very high turnout for this election for city and school board. And you also vote at the courthouse till noon on Monday, but if you vote on Tuesday, election day, you go to your normal polling place. So please, please vote, thank you.
I echo Mr. Kramer's comments on the trunk or treat. Thank you to the citizens of Leavenworth, and I know there were some families from Lansing, because I asked them where they were from, they were in from Lansing, and I'm sure there were some from Fort Leavenworth also, from our greater community. But also kudos to the city staff, thank you very much, it was very well planned and executed. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner? No, I didn't have anything. Commissioner?
I got to give a shout-out to the police department for the haunted house that they set up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My son was walking through it, he said, "This is not scary at all," and this money hopped out of the window. Thank you. Something that was real good to the city staff as well, and also to the citizens, get out and vote, vote your heart and vote your conscience.
Thank you, good, good job.
I like you mentioned the fire department, too, they have fires right there, and every little kid loves seeing a fire.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they kids do, so.
Thank you all.
It's always nice to have a fire, fire trucks there, thank you.
It's so nice to have the community get together and do things like this.
One other comment, it's a perfect venue for that trunk or treat, I mean, that was, it really is, so, I mean, just.
Is there not barky for all the people? Is that, I don't know. There's never a fight.
Well, yeah. Come early.
Because they went over in the grass and everything. Oh, they were in the grass. Yeah, they, yeah, that was okay. It's one evening, it's one evening. All right, I don't have anything to add, everybody.
One other quick question, and I ask since Chief Birch is here. Will the new fire truck be in the Veterans Day Parade? New aerial?
That'd be kind of cool.
Yeah, that would be awesome, everybody could see it then.
All right, well, not, I don't have anything else, so I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting, Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you.